I call the October 11th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradshaw? Commissioner Barlow? I see them on teams, just to let you know. Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Commissioner Hassett?
Here.
Commissioner Hubbard? He's here. Commissioner Martin?
Yeah.
Commissioner Portillo?
Here.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yeah.
Chairperson Gillette?
Here.
And Commissioner Morse? We have a quorum.
Thank you. We will now have the automated message.
Anyone who has not signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form, which is also located on the lobby table next to the sign-in sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on. Please note, there are stairs on the right, left, and center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using the stairs. There is also a ramp located to the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, have 17 copies and give them to a staff member at the back of the auditorium. Staff member, please hold up your hand for the audience. If you do not have 17 copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your documents. Please place your documents on the podium and line it up with the arrows indicated. If you want your documentation to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the documentation. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are seated at the tables with microphones during the meeting. If you have questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium. All speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentation statements. Everyone, please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must take a call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed from curb to curb. No food or drinks are allowed in the auditorium except for bottled water. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch for one hour per the chairman's discretion.
Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The items with a recommendation made by the Commission will be heard by the Board of Supervisors on Monday, November 6th, 2023, at 9:30 a.m. in this same location, with the exception of any continued items. Today, we're going to bring items 10 and 11 to the front of the agenda as the applicant is requesting to continue these items to January 10th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Do I have a motion to continue item number 10?
Motion to continue items 10 and 11.
I have a motion by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chairperson?
Aye.
Gillette, I apologize, we need to do them one at a time. They can't be done at...
Oh, I said 11, I meant 10, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Item number 10, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
We need to redo the motion.
We have to redo the motion, okay.
I make a motion to continue item 10.
Okay, I have a motion.
To the January meeting.
To the January 10th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at 10 o'clock.
To the January 10th meeting at 10 o'clock.
Okay, I have a motion to continue item number 10. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now I need a motion to continue item number 11.
Motion to continue item 11 to the January 10th meeting at 10 a.m.
I have a motion by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Now we have item number 1.
Item number 1 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 404-26102 from an AR agricultural residential zone to an RE 30M residential recreation 30,000 square foot minimum lot size zone to bring the property into compliance in the Canebeds vicinity. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions.
Thank you. I don't have anyone who wants to speak on this, but I will open the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have anything? Is the applicant here? And I'm going to close the public meeting and ask for a vote.
I'll make a motion to approve item 1, the staff recommendation.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Morse. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Item number 2. Amy Patsy.
Item number 2 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 405-54035 from an AR agricultural residential zone to a CRE commercial recreation zone to allow for nightly cabin rentals in the Canebeds vicinity. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions.
I will open the public hearing. Is the applicant here and do you wish to speak? Do you wish to speak or just be there for questions? Okay, thank you. And then I will close the public hearing and ask if the commissioners have any questions of the applicant.
Commissioner Gillette, I do, this is Mike Bradshaw.
Okay.
So I brought this up last meeting, which kind of where we ended. So my concern out in this area is, number one, the sewer water. So, number one, it's a shallow water table. What kind of, how are they facilitating water and treating it if necessary or maintaining the water supply for their guests? What sewer is, is the sewer system and/or septic system adequate for their guests? Access improvement concerns me quite a bit on this road. This, as I spoke last time, I actually pulled an individual out of the sand pit that is in front of this property at one point. Is this a public access, private? That's, and then last, but certainly not least, is fire and life safety concerns. How does, how, how does EMS? I know there's no cell service in this area. How are EMS contacted? Is there, is there adequate access? All weather improvements? I mean, these are concerns that I have with, with opening this up to a public venture type scenario.
Would the applicant like to answer those questions? Please give us your name and your address.
Jeanette Fennicombe, my address is 2545 East, 2575 South in Canebeds. And so to address all of those questions, in reference to the water, we have two wells. The first well is a shared well with five other property owners. And the second well, I had drilled just about two years ago, and it's on my own property, so it's for my own private use. So the cabins have access to both water sources. As far as the sewer is concerned, we don't have a sewer. We have a septic system. The house is on its own septic system, and the cabins have their own septic system. As far as the road access, I brought pictures to show the road access into my particular property and how they access my property. As you come down Canebeds Road, you make a left onto La Voix-Fennicombe Road, and there is a road sign that shows LV Bar Cabins off of the La Voix-Fennicombe Road, which has been just recently... Okay, all these pictures here for, thank you. Oh, okay. Thank you. So there's the road sign in particular. There's my house. You can see there on that picture there, that is the road coming into my house. That has been worked on. That is not sand that you see, that's road base. It's very hard-packed. It is not sand. The sand is on Alamo Lane, which comes down to my property, but I direct all my customers to come down this road off of La Voix-Fennicombe because of that problem with flooding from the canyon that I'm sure you guys are aware of because you've had to clean up Canebeds Road. The next picture there is a picture of of the road leading into the cabins. It's still all on my property, and it takes you to the back of my property. Here is a picture of the horse corrals, an extra parking area. This is a picture again of the road going to the cabins and then the cabin location. And you can see also the, the well is in this back area here, in the back of my property. So there are six cabins, and in the, in the information that was given to me, there was only listed five, but there are six. And so there's the picture of six cabins. It shows the road coming in, it shows the extra parking, it shows, it goes towards the area where they can sit and stargaze or play horseshoes. And it is a circle-type drive, so they can come in and circle out, and it's all been worked on with red cinders. And so those are the pictures of the access to my property. Again, Alamo Lane is quite a mess because of the flooding. Our, our neighbors have gotten together, the Barlos and myself, that live on this road or off Alamo Lane, we have put together a plan to put, and we're going to be instituting that plan real shortly. We're going to be putting in some ditches to help divert the water, and over 2,000 yards of red cinders have been ordered, and we're going to be putting that down. We know that we're going to have to continue to clean up after each flooding and take the sand out of the way from those red cinders and add and repair the road. But again, this is not how our customers access our property. It's just another access that is available. I've also talked with my brother-in-law, John West, and the Fennicombes who I am related to that borders my property. And they have also given permission for me to build another road going out that way that would connect to the West Road. As far as fire and EMS, I've never had any problem with the fire department or emergency services coming to my house because again, they access my property off of La Voix-Fennicombe and then onto that private access which we have permission to use. And they have been out to my place because the neighbors... One, one of the neighbors had put a trailer on the property just next to us, and it caught fire, and they had to come and put that fire out right next door, and they were on my property with all of their equipment. So I know that they can access it. As far as cell service, we have two separate companies that we have cell service through. We go through South Central as well as high-speed internet service. It is true that from part of Canebeds Road to my house, there is no service. However, as soon as you're on my property, you have service, you're able to call out for any type of emergencies that may occur. All the customers have the passwords to both of the cell services available to them. As far as the site plan, we have a copy. I have a copy here with me, and we have submitted it to the Mojave County Development Services, and it is under, currently being determined to administrate... I'm sorry, it's, it's under review and will respond by October 30th. So I think I addressed all of his questions. If I've missed something, could you remind me?
Any other questions from Commissioner Hubbard?
Could you put that picture of the cabins back up there again, please?
Sure, which one?
The one that shows the cabin.
You bet.
They look like they've been just moved in, and what have you got those anchored down with?
Well, all of...
Doesn't appear to be a foundation.
Correct. And we're going through the process of coming into compliance with the Building Department and all the other departments in reference to code.
Madam Chair.
So the wind, you're not worried about any wind or anything knocking them over?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could help answer some of those questions as well. Like Ms. Fennicombe said, they currently have applied for the site plan review. And like we mentioned last meeting, that site plan review goes to several agencies. It goes to our Environmental Quality Department, Blood Control, Building. We even send it to the local fire district in that area. And so those will all be reviewed, and they'll have comments if there's any corrections that need to be made. Public Works is also one of those reviewers, and will review the trips generated and whether or not improvements need to be made to any of the roads. And that's currently being reviewed by our department. And also, once that gets approved, then they would also still need to apply for the building permits, which, if there's any additional requirements to tie down the structures or build foundations, then they would have to do those as well.
Thank you.
I do have a copy of the site plan that I did submit with me, if you want to look at that.
Commissioner Martin?
I'm just curious, you've already been operating commercially out of there. Did you get turned in to motivate you to do this through the right channels?
I wasn't aware that I needed to do anything because I was under the impression that under a certain amount of square feet, I didn't have to apply for a permit. Then it was made known to me that anything over, when you add electricity and water to something, that kind of negates that thought. And so we did have somebody come to my home and notify us of that problem, and so then we began the process. We came in and spoke with Travis, our district supervisor, and met with a lot of these gentlemen here and began the process of becoming in compliance.
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the staff recommendation.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. We will move to item number 3, Alex Bolin.
Item 3 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 405-54040 from an AR agricultural residential zone to a CRE commercial recreation zone to allow for nightly cabin rentals and a music studio in the Canebeds vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Going to open the public hearing. Is the applicant here and do you wish to speak?
The applicant is available on Teams.
Does the applicant wish to speak or just answer questions?
If you can hear me, just, I can just answer questions. I'm in a similar situation as Jeanette.
Do you have anybody else wishing? Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if the commissioners have any questions.
Commissioner Gillette, I do have a couple of questions. Again, this is Commissioner Bradshaw. Again, I think the sewer water concerns, and I think Ms. Fennicombe discussed those. I am, I am concerned with those and, and the process that it's, that they go through to get approved. Fire and life safety, I appreciate Ms. Fennicombe's discussion. It's, it still is a major concern. I know that there's Wi-Fi and, and Wi-Fi calling, and that does alleviate a lot of those concerns. Just want to make sure that those are available. Access improvements, and it looks like this one has significant access improvements. However, it does also appear that there's a drainage channel through this property, so I'm wondering how that's being mitigated. And then one other concern that, that Ms. Fennicombe doesn't have, this one I think does, is the, is there an onsite manager? You know, the other one was adjacent to our home. This one doesn't appear to be adjacent to any other structures or facilities. So maybe if we could just have a brief discussion on those items.
Okay, yes, there's a full-time onsite manager, Alex and Lila Navas. We do, we do have a, we have improved the roads. We have coverts that go to the natural waterways and have not had, in near, we haven't had any problems like some of the other areas in the valley have throughout these really heavy rains we've had the last couple of years. And we're planning on going through all the departments as well. We have two septic systems, and we've had a well for years that we have been serviced, and we've had the water tested. And so we'll continue to do what we need to do to comply as we work, work things through.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions? Then I'll ask for a motion.
Move to approve with staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Portillo, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. Sorry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 4, Amy Patsy.
Madam Chair, I have to declare conflict on this one.
Okay, thank you.
Item number 4 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 12005032 from a C2H 1.7A highway commercial 1.7 acre minimum lot size zone to a CMO, commercial manufacturing, open lot storage zone to allow for a manufacturing business in the Lake Havasu City vicinity. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions.
Thank you. Going to open the public hearing. Is the applicant present and do you wish to speak? Thank you. Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if the commissioners have any questions.
Can I ask a question?
Commissioner Hubbard?
Lake Havasu City doesn't want any more storage units. Is that what you plan on doing here eventually, just putting in storage units?
Would you like to come to the microphone and give us your name and your address?
It says here, outside storage. And manufacturing, what are we manufacturing?
Name's Sean Martin. Parcel is...
Your address, please.
My address, 1495 South Gate Street, San Bernardino, California.
Thank you.
I have no intention of, of making storage. The CMO was, was suggested to me when I went up to the, prior to buying the property. So if you'd rather just make it CM, that'd be fine.
So are you planning on opening a business there?
I have a business, actually in California, and I'd like to move it out here.
You're going to expand it?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions? Oh, Commissioner Martin?
What type of business?
We sell metal, which is all done indoors. We don't put anything outside. I have a machine shop, which we drill holes, machine parts, and then welding, where we join parts through the process of welding.
Okay, so you're really intending on manufacturing and just not open lot storage?
I have no intention, it doesn't, it's, you don't make as much money with the storage.
I'm sorry, what was that?
It's not as profitable to do storage, so we're, I have no intention of doing open lot storage.
You're going to be manufacturing?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other commissioners have any questions?
How long have you owned this property?
Commissioner?
I think two months now.
Two months?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could speak a little bit to the, the zone, it's called commercial manufacturing, open lot storage. That's the lesser of our manufacturing-type zones. Once you, CMO, you can't, you can't do it without the open lot storage. That comes part of it. But he is looking to do manufacturing on this lot. The, any zone higher than this would be our M1, M2, or MX zones that allow for a lot more intense uses. CMO is a lighter manufacturing-type use, but it does also allow for open lot storage, but so do the other ones. It's just, that's the name of the zone, just wanted to clarify that.
I was just confused if he was intending just for storage or he was going to...
Any other questions? Commissioner Hubbard?
This isn't the golf course area, isn't it? There's Arnold Palmer, that'd be the golf course, right?
There's a, I think there's a light manufacturing between us and the golf course. And across the street, I believe, is actually CM and CMO.
Okay, does that answer your question? Okay, all right. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve item number 4 with staff recommendations.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hassett, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So moved. Item number 5, Peggy Clements.
Item number 5 is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from a rural development area land use designation to a suburban development area land use designation and a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 21703047 from an AR 2A agricultural residential 2 acre minimum lot size zone to an AR agricultural residential zone to allow for a minor land division in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Thank you. I have noticed a couple of phones have gone off. Please check your phones and make sure that they're on vibrate only. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is the applicant here and do you wish to speak? Do we have any others? Nope. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if any commissioners have any questions of this applicant. Hearing none, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I move to approve item five with staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number six, Peggy Clements.
Chairman Gillette, item number six needs to be continued to the November meeting due to a posting error.
Okay, I need a motion to continue.
Move to...
To continue to the November meeting at 10:00 AM.
Second.
I have a motion to continue this item by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Portillo. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number seven, Amy Patsy.
Item number seven is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel numbers 339, 36, 012, and 013 from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36 acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 10A agricultural residential 10 acre minimum lot size zone and an AR 18A agricultural residential 18 acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions.
Thank you. Going to open the public hearing. Is the applicant here and do you wish to speak? Please state your name and your address.
Good morning. I'm Donna Kraus from Mojave Engineering and we are representing the owners with this rezone and general plan amendment request. If there's any questions, basically, the property owners have invested originally in this property for retirement and their intent is to live on one of the parcels and then to sell the remaining parcels through time, which is why they agreed to the 18 minimum acre for, because this will be passive. It's not something that they're just going to do overnight. But they do plan on living on one of the parcels, so they will have a vested interest in how the area develops. Is there any questions from any commissioners?
Thank you, ma'am. I do have one person who wants to speak on this.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
You can take a seat. I have one person who wants to speak on this and her name, his name is Terry Owens. Should be number eight. Okay, all right. Do the commissioners have any questions of this applicant? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve with staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Martin. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number eight by Peggy Clements.
Item eight is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for assessor's parcel number 30631005B to allow for RV park in an AR 5A agricultural residential five acre minimum lot size zone in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here and do you wish to speak? Okay, thank you. We don't have, oh, we do. Okay, I have Terry Owens. And would you please come down to the podium? And I also have Robert Wilson and Phyllis Wilson. So would you be standing by, please? Your name and your address, please.
Teresa Owens, 6389 Supai Drive, Golden Valley, 86413. So first, I want to know, how many spaces are they proposing for the RV park? Have they considered the traffic? Right now, I know that there's a lot of cars since they have purchased the property. There are cars going on Supai Drive off of Teddy Roosevelt. They're speeding. These are not county maintained roads. The only other way, other than Supai, is they would have to go down Teddy Roosevelt to Colorado and then come up either Laosa or La Palma. And again, those roads are not county maintained. And if there's going to be a lot of traffic, especially during the rain in the winter, it's going to cause, as it does now, a lot of rough road and the roads getting torn up. Let's see, have they considered, is there sewers? There's proper septic based on the number of spaces? Is there going to be a site plan? I know that they have to send out letters to the homeowners within 300 feet and I'd like to know if that was in fact done. And then, is there any consideration as to how this park is going to change the direction of the washes that are existing? Because it looks like there is a wash that runs through both sides of this property. And I know that I have seen activity down in the washes, like cars parked for sale were there and then just other activity. There were a couple of big machines there at one point. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Robert Wilson.
Robert Wilson, 3468 North Laosa Road, Golden Valley. I keep this short and sweet. There are four and I think five RV parks in a five mile stretch on Highway 68. Highway 68 is the only paved road in that area. Everything else is dirt, like the lady said. They're very rough and a lot of soft dirt. And when it rains, it's a mess. That's all, that's all I have.
Thank you. Phyllis Wilson.
Hello, thank you for hearing us out on this. My husband and I have been living in Arizona for 20 years. We moved to beautiful Golden Valley two years ago, to this lovely neighborhood. Great people. We're on Laosa Road, my address, I'm sorry. He said it. It's 3468 North Laosa Road. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Anyway, on our road alone, which Terry mentioned, we're not county maintained. It's just dirt. Seven of the homeowners are widowers, you know, they've been there forever. Our house has been there 40 years. We have beautiful trees. We have birds coming all the time. It's quiet. We can leave our windows open, our doors open. Very seldom does a car go by my house. It's so quiet and peaceful there. And now, my husband and I are RVers. We've traveled everywhere. We love RV parks. We have certain ones we always stay at. To me, that we already have four in Golden Valley. There's lots of property in Golden Valley where this could go, you know, right handy to Highway 68. This property, to me, it would be a beautiful home for someone, you know, it's got the trees. It used to be a nursery, so it's really a pretty property. So I just wanted to come to you today to express that we love our little neighborhood. We don't want it, we don't want RVs going up and down our street. We don't want dogs barking. We just really want to keep it quiet and beautiful where we live. We're so happy. And I just want to thank you for letting us express our feelings to you about this. And I mean, I'm not against RV parks, don't get me wrong, you know, just not down my street, you know. And so, I just want to ask you to please don't allow him, these people, to put an RV park in our neighborhood. And thank you.
Thank you. I've heard from these people who are speaking, they want to know how many RVs. They want to know, what are you going to do about the traffic? And they want to know that you have made arrangements for like septic tanks. So would the owner please come back? The applicant please come back and answer those questions.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Jeff Kissed. I live 937 East Sandy Devine in Kingman. This is my business partner and friend, Dave Mayhew, from same address.
Thank you.
We purchased this property because of its beauty. It used to be a nursery. And our main objective is to turn this into a 55 or older affordable housing for maybe seniors or veterans. That was our initial goal. Then, looking into the VA type direction, it seemed like a lot more work. So we're going to, instead of catering to just veterans, we'll give veterans discounts and help them move in. Like she, the lady just mentioned, it used to be a nursery and they used to have hundreds of cars up and down this road every day. And I assure you that our traffic's going to be minimal compared to what it was when it was a nursery. Basically, you get off Teddy Roosevelt is really the only way to get to the property as of right now. There's a couple of washes between us and Colorado, which is the next major street going east. So I was in contact with the planning and zoning department on whether those washes can be made whole and made drivable, because they're pretty big right now. There is one big wash that runs through the middle of the property. Nothing's changed, even from the photos, I went back as far as 15 years, 20 years. The wash has never changed the direction. There's a huge overpass and a valley for that water to flow through. I did have the water department out. Ted from the water department came out and said that we were actually able to get back some of our land that we've lost from the rains that have come through there. So we're working with the departments and we're not planning on making any major changes to the layout. As far as the number of trailers, there is a big difference between 29 and under and 30 and over in the septic world. And we're trying to do this as a, instead of just one after another, like the two big ones up the street, we want to make it more of a family area. We're a little bit bigger yards, you know, 40 feet wide. We're trying to keep it under that 29 number for the whole eight acres. So, you know, it's not going to be a circus in there. We want to just keep a nice, quiet community that we're proud of and that the city of Golden Valley.
Do you know whether, who keeps the road up?
Currently, when you come off of Teddy Roosevelt, someone grades it on a regular basis and then somewhere around, there's one other street. We're on La Palma, then there's another street and then Teddy Roosevelt. And they stop there and they leave the rest of it ungraded. I don't know who's responsible for that first two blocks. The machinery that she was speaking about has been there for 20 years. It's a grader and a backhoe. We've got the backhoe running and we've been, that's what we've been using to clean up the property. Me and him have a thousand holes in us from trimming trees. So the tractor is operational and working and we'd be willing to do minor, as Ted mentioned to us from the planning department, we can't do anything major, but we're able to do minor road corrections and we're able to, you know, we'd be willing to take responsibility for that after heavy rain.
Oh, that's what was going to be my next question. Are you willing to cooperate and do your share on keeping the roads up?
Absolutely.
I think that would mean a lot to your neighbors.
Absolutely. We're doing it now, actually. We just, not a few weeks ago, made that wash passable so you can get down to the VFW hall.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if any commissioners have any questions. Commissioner Alexander.
Yes. Have you looked into the possibility of having direct access off of Highway 68? Have you contacted ADOT or looked into that possibility?
So I've been in major conversations with the previous owner and I guess it was her daughter who acquired the property in this whole ass. And he tried for years to get an exit directly off there, but because of the overpass and the bridge, I guess between the bridge and Teddy Roosevelt, there's not enough speed reduction to make it worthwhile, because you're not going to change the bridge. So there just isn't, from what I understand, I never thought that would even be an option because they were so adamant that there wasn't enough distance between the bridge and Teddy Roosevelt and the bridge in Colorado to make that even possible. But La Palma dead ends right next to us. And I think from the bridge to La Palma, it's only about 100 yards and there might not be enough room to come down from highway speed to be able to make that right end turn.
What about, what about on the opposite end?
On the opposite end, there's
That narrow strip there.
There's six properties between us and Neely's indoor swap meet. And it's an option, but we don't own all that. We just own eight acres. There's a four acre, six acre, a two acre, and then Neely. And nothing in between.
That property is all vacant.
Yeah, it's all vacant. There's one other, it's the twin washes. So it's called a twin wash. We're one wash and then about a quarter of a mile to the east is another large, another large wash.
Commissioner Martin?
Probably is unbuildable.
My name's Dave Mayhew, if I may. The property, when we bought it in February, was totally trash. Garbage, we hauled tons and tons and tons of garbage, trash and trimmed trees. Anybody that's driven by there recently should be able to notice a change of how we have beautified it from just a junkyard to a very beautiful nursery again with a lot of palm trees that are trimmed by us. And me and him did it mostly by ourselves in the last seven months. We want to be a part of the community, help people get jobs. You know, I mean, we're going to have to, if we have an RV park, we'll be employing some other people. Hopefully, I got the tractor going, hopefully I'll get the grader going and we might be able to do something a little better as far as road help or assistance or access to the property. And if it, like, I know for myself, I've owned property in deserts before and dust is a major problem. And we always use the water truck to, once in a while, spray the road down to keep the dust down. But we don't plan on having a very large place. It's, everyone's going to pick out pretty much their spot that they want to be and have it beautified.
I have a question.
Commissioner Martin?
I know you said RV park, but a little while ago you mentioned trailer. Is it?
Discussing with Peggy and that department, because it is in a flood zone, if we were to put new structures on there, it would kind of escalate the whole level of survey and engineering needed. So as long as it's on wheels, it can be moved on a reasonable amount of time, say there's a huge storm coming or, it being mobile changes the dynamic. This is just from my understanding, initial permit stuff when we're just coming into this. So our option is, I mean, our intent is not to build like small homes, like the previous ones we were showing where they're anchored to the ground. These are going to be long-term, 40-foot fifth-wheel trailers that are hooked up, septic and power and one.
Newer.
And how many spots are you looking at?
Well, like we said, like 29 or 30 or under, because that's where the whole dynamics of the amount of wastewater flow changes. This is just initial conversations with an engineer, with an initial of an engineer, so 30 and under.
Commissioner Hubbard?
It sounds like more than an RV park. It's going to be like a community. Like they move in and they're not going to have the 14-day have-to-get-out type thing.
We're actually, I met him in Lincoln City, Oregon. He was my neighbor 15 years ago and there's a lot of RV parks. There's a lot of people traveling around the country right now just enjoying, you know, life on life on the road in an RV. And they like to spend a month or two months, three months. I've got people right now from Wisconsin that are knocking on my door, trying to book for six months. Just they're retired folks in Wisconsin. They just want to come on here and join.
So you're going to file for a compliance, you know, for the septic and all these other kind of things so they all have good hookup?
There's currently a septic for our building. There's a 1,200 square foot steel building. So the septic is in for that. There's water. There's water throughout the entire park. We're working right now, there's a, there's a non-permitted septic. There was five other RV spots up there that we're trying to bring up to code, but basically.
You're not really looking for, RV traffic probably won't be a big problem on the road then because they'll be kind of permanently there for a while.
This isn't a campground where people are going to, you know, 50 people coming in and out every day. We're looking for permanent residents, 55 or older, people who just, who are on the road and just enjoying retirement, active retirement, you know, side by sides. And, you know, we have that little road that runs along 68 that everybody uses for, for like kind of the, and our intentions is to use that road if it's legal for us to get to the Arizona Peace Trail, which is up, right up the road, that big national park. We actually are right at the tip of the northern tip of the Arizona Peace Trail. So, you know, folks like to toodle down to the American Pizza Company, grab a pizza, then go up into the desert and do some exploring.
Do you still have a question, Commissioner Patel?
Um, so you mentioned 29 or 30 spaces. And I know that you're anticipating these are going to be fifth-wheel trailers. And this is kind of a question for staff and/or the applicant. If this rezone gets changed, what's going to stop them from doing park models? Because you get to that and if you have park models in there and you have 29 spaces, they're not going to make the cutoff for E323 compliance for nitrogen restriction. And I'm not even sure they would make it, although don't quote me on that, if they have permanent residents at 29 or 30 spaces with fifth wheels. So, and nitrogen restriction.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Patel. Our zoning ordinance currently allows park model units the same as we would for an RV. So our staff and our environmental quality department would need to take that into consideration that if those, if the park model units allow for more wastewater than just a regular fifth wheel or something like that, then they would need to take that into consideration when they're doing their review.
I don't quote me on that. I think the flow goes up, the required unit flow goes up by 150% for a park model versus a trailer, a transient trailer as well. There might even be some differences for things for when you have a permanent resident.
Any more questions?
I got a question. When you refer to park model, is that the design of the trailer or?
Park model, it's basically, it's the little mini mobile homes. The difference is this, you know, and I think it's a difference in your building, building.
Has no wheels.
Compliance. The park model is built differently than the same exact dwelling that you would put on a residential lot and call it a small mobile home. But the building code between the two is a little different.
We have had that conversation and to have a fixed structure that would need like a permit for a structure, it raises the whole level of all the survey and the drainage issues and everything that comes with it. So our tensions are just to stay with, with things with wheels.
I think if we approve this as, as requested, you could just do it if you wanted to.
We could do a park model?
Well, no, I mean, you shouldn't, but, but I think if we approved it as, as requested, you could.
Stipulation.
Yeah.
I didn't understand that last sentence.
If you, so, so if we approve this, the way, the way it's presented to us right now.
Okay.
And you went on down the road and you're operating your business three years from now and say, hey, I want to put in park models, you could do it.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
That doesn't mean you should and that doesn't mean we shouldn't put that as a stipulation that you can't do it.
Got that.
Mr. Davis.
Madam Chair, one tool that we often don't use but have the ability to use is to add a condition to the standard condition so we could add a condition that park models can't be used for this permit.
Would that, would that be the proper wording? Like we call them park model mobile homes?
Please turn off your phones.
Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Patel, that could work. It's however you want to word it. With it being in a flood zone, perhaps a better option is to ensure that all RVs that are onsite remain roadworthy. And that would eliminate those set park model units as well as any other that are kind of of a similar nature that the county would still consider RVs.
Chairman, if I may. So part of this process, right now, we're doing the rezone to see if this is something that would be suitable for this area. If the rezone does get approved, we would go through the site plan and then also the, the environmental quality permitting. And I believe at the time that the, the septic permit is being reviewed, that could be a point that would limit the number of, of units and types of units that would go into place there. So if, if the applicant gets approved here today and then is being reviewed for their septic permits and it's found that, hey, based on the size of your acreage and nitrogen loading and, and what this site can allow from a, from a septic perspective, that that limits the number of units, that would be something that we would communicate during that process and revise the site plan to, to limit only those units that could be connected to the system.
I understand that as being 30. And we have a 12, we have a bathroom in our building and we have one RV out there already. So we're, I guess it would be 28 more, 28 additional.
Are there any other questions? All right, then, thank you very much, Surs.
Chairperson Gillette, I just wanted to clarify. This is a request for a special use permit, not a rezone.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, then I'm, I'm asking for a motion.
I move to approve this item with staff recommendations and the additional stipulation that all proposed units remain mobile and roadworthy.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Patel, seconded by Commissioner Morse. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Item 9A, Peggy Clements.
Item 9A is an evaluation of a request for a rezone for a portion of Assessor's Parcel Number 30631002B from a C2 general commercial zone to a C2H highway commercial zone to allow for shipping container sales and rental in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if the applicant is here.
Yes, ma'am, more available.
All right, thank you. We have no applications for anyone else to speak. So I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if the commissioners have any questions. Hearing none, I will ask for a motion.
Make a motion.
To approve her staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item 9B, Peggy Clements.
Item 9B is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's Parcel Number 30631002B to allow for manufacturing in conjunction with retail services in a C2H highway commercial zone in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if the applicant wishes to speak.
Present and here for questions.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if the commissioners have any questions. And I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve her staff recommendation.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Alexander. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 10 and item number 11 have been continued. So we move to item number 12. Peggy Clements.
Item number 12 is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's Parcel Number 24513008 to allow for an RV park in an AR agricultural residential zone in the Yucca vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing and ask if the applicant is present and do you wish to speak? Thank you. Close the public hearing. Does any commissioner have a question of this applicant? Commissioner Martin. The applicant will please come to the microphone. Get your name and your address.
Dallinheimus 3768, Texoma, Lake Havasu.
How many spaces are you looking at here?
Looking to do a maximum of 40, but I mean, that's in due time. Probably started out pretty slow. I don't have an investor or nothing like that. So I want to get set up and I want to make it more spacious than a natural RV park. I want people to actually feel comfortable there, so have a little bit more space.
And your septic water?
That, yeah, kind of waiting for all of this to go through. And if this all goes through, then yeah, we'll add some septic and drill a well. So make sure everybody's got support there for themselves, water and septic.
So a question for staff. He still has to go through the normal permitting for the special use permit.
Site plan.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Martin, that's correct, yeah. If this is approved, then he can apply for his RV park plan permit or site plan. With that, we look at handicap accessibility roads. RV spaces has to meet all of our, our conditions within our zoning ordinance, flood control. And then once approved through the site plan, then he would apply for the permits for his septic system, for any electric and water systems that he would need to be, have to improve the property with. And so he would go through those processes.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of this applicant? Hearing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll move to approve item 12, the staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 13, Amy Patsy.
Item number 13 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone for Assessor's Parcel Number 20415021 from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 5A agricultural residential 5-acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the old Highway 93 vicinity. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing and ask if the applicant is here and do you wish to speak? I will close the public hearing and ask if the commissioners have any questions. Commissioner Martin.
Can the applicant explain the right of way on the parcel breakup?
This has to be answered by the staff since the applicant is not here.
Chairman Gillette, sorry, Commissioner Martin. So one of the conditions of approval for a minor land division is that the applicant will be required to go through the parcel plat process. And so at that time, the parcel plat will be reviewed to ensure that legal access is provided to all of the parcels that are created.
Thank you. Any other question? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion.
Second the motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Alexander. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed? Okay. We are going to move to item number 25. A staff report by Peggy Clements.
Item 25 is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from a rural residential area land use designation to a suburban estate area land use designation and a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Numbers 33130056A, 056B, and 056C from an AR 5A agriculture 5-acre agricultural residential 5-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 3A agricultural residential 3-acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a lot split in the Kingman vicinity. There are five letters of opposition. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if the applicant is present and do you wish to speak? Questions? Okay. I do have two people who have requested to speak on this item. Brian Thasher and, oh boy, Don Olson. Your name and your address, please.
Brian Thrasher, 3153 East Cali Peral, Kingman, Arizona. Thank you for letting me speak. Mr. Powers bought property in our neighborhood and he's been trying to put in RVs and he constantly is having compliance issues with that. And he just recently had someone living in a tent. We have no idea where his restroom materials were going on the property. I wasn't notified because I'm a little farther than the 300 feet, but I'm right across the street. Our roads out there are maintained by me with a 1958 N Ford. He's wanting to divide so he can have more RVs out there. And it's, the roads just aren't made for it. The county don't maintain it. It's three miles to the paved road. I do all the work. I'm the, one of the youngest ones in the neighborhood. I get no help from anybody else because they can't. So anything that gets done is done by me. And I just don't think, I bought my property out of town. I have 22 acres up on the side of the mountain. And I, I didn't buy it to have an RV park put in by me. And this is his way of going around the zoning issues for an RV park. And because he never has the permits for the RVs properly in place and he's allowed someone to stay in a tent, which is against the county rules. I just feel like he doesn't respect our community out there that we are. There's a shared well with 14 properties on it. I maintain that for everybody too. And I just don't feel like he respects the community that's out there and that, and all the neighbors own their property and live there. And we don't want transients in and out of the neighborhood all the time.
You say there's a shared well?
Yes, ma'am.
This property as well?
No, ma'am. He's, his, his is a water hall property. He's not on the shared well, but the neighbors to the south that you have a letter from Lonnie Green and the neighbors to the north that you have letters from, they're on the shared well. And most of them are, you know, 70s and 80s. And the guy living in the tent had some confrontations with some of them. And, and, you know, the police have been out there. It's, it's, he's just not following the community standards and living in a community with what he's trying to do. He's trying to have an RV park on his property to make money. And that's not why we all live out where we live, north of town, is we don't want that in our neighborhood. He already is permitted for a few and that's nothing we can do with. He already is permitted for a few, and that's nothing we can do with. He has, you know, finally got septic to put in on another lot, but he's, he just continually pushes at the boundaries of the zoning and everybody, and we're constantly having to call codes enforcement for things going on down there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is our buzzer for two minutes not working?
So I stopped it after you started asking questions. I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. Don Olson?
Yes, ma'am. 7838 East Corte del Peral. I'm a neighbor up the street from Mr. Thasher. I served my country in Vietnam. I lived in the People's Republic of California. I came to Arizona to live in peace. I've caught transits on my property. I've had militias out on the, some of Mr. Powers' property, playing war games, and they threatened to kill me if I came close. I've had enough of guns in my life. I believe in peace and not war. I will defend myself if I have to. We don't need this stuff. I came to Arizona to live in peace. I love my neighbors. We have a nice little neighborhood there. We trust each other. We help each other. When somebody's sick, our neighbors come. We don't need transits running around on our property. We've had some theft issues up there, and it's because transits think they can just travel all around. None of us want to commit violence up there. We want to live in peace, but we could, this is a bad idea, and I would just pray that you folks could see our viewpoint. I'm 80 years old. I've served my country with honor, and I want to live in peace. That's all I want. I want to live in peace. I've served my country. I just want to live in peace. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, sir. I'd like the applicant to please come to the stand. Your name and your address, please.
Ryan Powers, 7815 North Avenida Del Barro, Kingman, Arizona.
I have a question for you. One of these people said that you had made this attempt before. Is that correct?
None of these people have ever talked to me directly, and they have no idea what they're talking about.
Well, I don't think I would talk to you either if you had people who threatened to kill me.
That's never happened. If that's ever happened, I've never heard of it. I've never heard of any war games or anything like that on any of my properties. That's, this is the first time I've heard of it. I've never heard of that before, so I don't know where that's coming from.
It's coming from a Vietnam veteran.
Okay. Yeah, I've never heard of that, and the funny thing is, too, is the people that live on my properties are also veterans and disabled and elderly, so...
Tents?
No. I, somebody reached out to me. He was kind of at a low point in his life. He just got a job out here. He's working, and I did know that it is legal to tent camp on a property for up to two weeks, and then you have to relocate, and then you can camp again for another two weeks. That is legal. That is...
Is that why you're asking for this rezone, so they can go back?
No. So all I'm trying to do is, my properties are three 5-acre parcels. I'm trying to just make four 4-acre parcels, and I'm not trying to start an RV park. Right now, there are RVs there, but they're all, they are all permitted legally. I have proof of all that, that they have legal permits. I have septic tanks. I got water. I got electric. I got everything out there. I'm not trying to start an RV park, but as I can, right now, that's what they're being, the properties are being used as while I have, or while I save up money and, you know, when I got the time to develop them further, but that's not what my intention is, like, permanently.
Have you made an attempt to get along with your neighbors, to talk to them?
They don't talk to me. Like, they, they make all these wild accusations and assumptions, but that's not, they don't, they have no leg to stand on. Like, there, I don't even, this is the first time I've heard of war games going on my properties. I go out there every day. I don't, I've never seen that. I work, I work in town, but then I come out there almost every day.
At night?
Okay, yeah, at night when I get off of work.
Calling you a liar.
I'm not calling you a liar. I just never seen that before.
Don't be speaking from the audience.
You're not allowed to talk to the...
He gave you the courtesy of listening to you, so just be quiet.
But, yeah, so I have people living there, and they are veterans, and they are disabled, and they are elderly. I'm not, I don't have war games going on on my property. This is funny, because I've never heard of that before.
Okay. Do any commissioners have any questions of this applicant? And I'll ask for, okay, Commissioner Petillo.
So you're, just to kind of recap, your intent with this application is to take your property and get it, get it split into only four parcels?
Yeah.
One RV, a parcel? What, is that what you're kind of looking at?
I have two RVs out there. That's it.
Okay, and those are, have the two-year permits?
Correct.
Whatever it is, one-year, two-year permits?
Correct. It just got renewed, so I just paid the fees for that, and, and the funny thing is, too, is Mr. Thasher's doing the exact same thing right down the road, on the same road. He has, he has another property down there. He's renting it out to an RV, and he's got a bus on it, so he's being a total hypocrite.
Well, I would suggest, I can see this turning into something really bad.
Well, I never, I've never started that.
It has to be you, sir, making an attempt to get along with your neighbors.
I've always, I've always been super nice to everybody. I've never complained about nobody. Everybody's against me. I've never, I've never called or complained or done anything. There's, there's people that have, like, broke-down cars and trash and stuff all over the place, and code enforcement comes out, and they don't get in any trouble, but then they harass me, but then I've talked to code enforcement, and even they say that this is ridiculous. They, they're like on my side, because they know that my properties are cleaner and more kept up, like, and...
People over 80 have a terrible time sometimes getting to that kind of stuff. Maybe you should offer to help.
I, I'm willing to, but they, they just bypass me. They don't even try to talk to me. They just go straight to code enforcement, call in the police, do this, do that. There's never any cordial communication. It's just, they just completely bypass me.
Well, like I said, I can see this turning into a really bad situation.
And...
All of you should be very careful.
Yeah, and like I, and like I said, the people that are there are veterans. They're, you know, I have a guy that's a veteran. I have a guy that's like 80 years old. None of these people are doing anything crazy. They're just, they're just living in their trailers and just living their lives and not doing anything wrong, and it's peaceful, it's quiet. We don't do, there's nothing going on out there.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Chairman?
Commissioner, wait, hang on. Commissioner Alexander?
Well, actually, this is a question for staff in that the applicant states that the RVs are permitted, but in your notes, it says the site currently has two permitted RVs and a shipping container. Can you clarify for me, please?
Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Alexander, correct. So at the time that the staff report was written, those RVs were unpermitted. Since then, earlier this month, the applicant came in and did apply for those RV permits for the two RVs.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Commissioner...
Chairman Gillette, I have a, I have a question also.
Okay, hang on.
Just, I'm just going from five parcel, three, into four 4-acre parcels.
Two of four.
Yeah, and...
What are you going to do with them then? Will you sell them, or?
I bought these properties in 17, and I have no intention of selling them anytime soon. I, I want to, you know, develop, maybe build some houses on, me and my dad do construction, so that's, that was our intention. We didn't, and, but just in the meantime, I, instead of leaving them vacant, you know, I have, and I'm always willing to help out veterans or disabled or elderly, so that's kind of...
So you're just trying to make them all the same size?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's not going to be any, I've got, I've read on the opposition letters that they're worried about the roads getting all jacked up and devaluing their properties and all these crazy things. There's, there's other properties all around me that are, you know, busted up. There's trash, there's broke-down cars everywhere, and my property has none of that. I have a, I have a shipping container. Everything's orderly and clean and neat, so, yeah.
I'm going to say one more time, if you have your phone on, turn it off. Thank you, sir. I believe there's someone else who has a question. Oh, Bradshaw. Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So, Mr. Powers, do you currently reside at this property? You said you travel out there every night, so is this your permanent residence or just a partial residence?
Partial. Like, I don't live there full-time. I did, I used to, but I don't currently because I moved into town to be closer to work, but I have all my storage and everything that I, a lot of the stuff that I own is out there, so, and then I have mail and packages and stuff delivered there, so I'm out there every day. So I do care about the community. I do care about the roads. I care about all these things that they're trying to accuse me and say that I don't care about nothing, but they don't know, they don't know what they're talking about. They don't talk to me.
Thank you very much, but please be careful. Did you need to speak? No, okay. All right, then I will ask for a motion.
Motion to approve with staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, I have a second. I have a motion by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Petillo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 26. That's Amy Patsy.
Item number 26 is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from a light industrial land use designation to a general commercial land use designation and a rezone from a CMO 28A, Commercial Manufacturing, Open Lot Storage, 28-acre Minimum Lot Size Zone, and a C2H, 8-acre Highway Commercial, 8-acre Minimum Lot Size Zone, to a C2 General Commercial Zone for Assessor's parcel number 32416031 to allow for future commercial development in the Kingman vicinity. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if the applicant is here and do you wish to speak? Okay, thank you. We don't have anyone else who has requested to speak on this item, so I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if the commissioners have any questions. Hearing none, I will ask for a motion.
I move to approve with staff recommendations.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Petillo, seconded by Commissioner Morse. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Now we get to go back to item, item 14. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's Matthew Gunderson.
Item number 14 is an evaluation of a request for a major amendment to the Mojave County General Plan for Assessor's parcel numbers 31619013 through 022, 31701010 and 011, 31707001 and 002, 31736001, 032, 055 and 059, 31741003 and 005, 31742001 through 127, 31745056, 31755001, 31756001, 003, 004, and 006, 31759005 and 014 through 018, 31760019, 022, 023, 024, and 029, 31761012, 014, 017 through 021, and 025, and 026, 32601011, 015, and 017 through 022, 32603014, 015A and 138B, 32613005, 33710147, 34201002, and 004, from Urban Development Area, Medium Density Residential, General Commercial, Suburban Residential, Rural Development Area, Public Facilities, Light Industrial, and Suburban Development Area Land Use Designations to be amended to Urban Development Area, Airport Industrial, Medium Density Residential, General Commercial, and Light Industrial Land Use Designations in the White Hills and Dolan Springs vicinities. The proposed area contains approximately 8,610 acres, or approximately 13.45 square miles of privately owned land. The majority of the site is in the White Hills vicinity, near US Highway 93 and White Hills Road, with the remaining portion in the Dolan Springs vicinity, near the intersection of Highway 93 and Pierce Ferry Road. In addition to the 8,610 acres that are included in this major plan amendment, an additional 1,529 acres are also part of the overall plan development, but already contain the necessary land use designations to proceed with the newly planned development. The area already contains a previously approved runway, approximately, approximately one and a half miles northeast of US Highway 93, off of White Hills Road. This runway is proposed to develop into a future cargo airport and surrounding air park. The applicant is proposing a mix of industrial and commercial land use designations to provide for employment opportunities, as well as to provide additional services to the existing residences in the White Hills vicinity. As part of the major plan amendment application process, the applicant held neighborhood meetings for the proposed project. They held one in the White Hills area and one in the Dolan Springs area, with approximately 450 residents attending these two meetings. As a result of these meetings, there were a few minor changes that were made to the original application in an attempt to mitigate some of the concerns that were received by the applicant. Staff recommends approval for the proposed major amendment to the Mojave County General Plan with the conditions listed.
Do I dare say good job? But thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if the applicant is here and if you wish to speak at this time.
Good morning, Honorable Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks. I'm acting as the owner's agent, and I am pleased to be up here with the owner, founder and developer of the Entrata Project, Mr. Alan Barbridge. Mr. Barbridge has been working in Mojave County for 20 years. He and I worked on some of the original Mardi and stuff, so we've been in this area out here for a long time. We're going to kind of do a tag team deal here. I do want to present the project for you, and then Al will follow some of the goals and visions, and then I'll close out. I know we have about 15 minutes, so we're going to get going. Matt, really great job in going through this. This project is very large. The Entrata Project has over 10,100 acres in it. Doing this work, this major plan application, as well as the 10 follow-up rezone applications, was not easy. The sheer deluge of data connected with the over 200 parcels included in this, keeping in mind the existing zoning designations, a proposed zoning designation, existing general plan, and all of the other data issues with this, it was not easy. It was complex, and I do want to thank Tim and Scott and Matt and Alex and everyone here, because it was a tremendous amount of work. I'm really pleased to be before you right now, though. Matt did a good job in going through this. If we have a copy of the, I don't know if you have it on your deal, a copy of the overall map, or you want me to put this here? I think it'd be nice for a reference to kind of show the project. Get that up there? You going to spin it, or you want me to? Okay, so the project is located primarily up in the White Hills area and north of Pierce Ferry, east of Highway 93. It's kind of broken into two areas. We call it the north and the south. The north area contains about 7,878 acres up there. The southern portion covers 2,236 acres collectively. They are presented as one unit, because we are, we do intend to do similar marketing and connect these together with our infrastructure issues and stuff like that. these together with our infrastructure issues and stuff like that. The proposal that we present before you is consistent with the Mojave County General Plan in that it provides for a cohesive, self-sustaining growth area. And that's really important because you have something this large. The regulations require you present something that includes all of the elements for a future incorporated area if the residents choose to do that. Now, this is a really long-term project, you know, 20, 30, 40, 50 years. It's a long time, but similar to Bullhead, Havasu, some of the other areas. When they get to a certain point, they need to have all those elements if they choose to incorporate. So this plan does meet that requirement. We have included several... Is there someone in the room? Here. I was going to ask to kind of show a little bit bigger version of this right here. So the plan includes several elements. The specific major general plan application, like Matt said, included 8,610 acres of the application, and it's broken down into four or five major... Thank you. Major designations for urban development area. The airport industrial area. I'll just sort of point out here, and they're color-coded, which is awesome. So the blue area here is the airport industrial area that we're looking at. Currently, there's an existing almost 9,000-acre runway, private runway. It is in operation and use. It is recognized by the FAA. It is used by the property owner, Mr. Barbridge, who's a licensed pilot. We do intend... So that runway is graded, and it runs from just north of White Hills up to the top here. So that would be the existing graded runway. The industrial, it's HI, Matt, not Light Industrial. I think it's Heavy Industrial is on the application. Those would be identified in the purple areas on this map, and I'm just looking at the White Hills area now. So there's a significant piece right here that fronts the major commercial corridor, Highway 93, I-11 corridor. This has been identified and 20 years ago was identified as part of the NAFTA route. It's why this commission keeps seeing things like truck stops and other major service opportunities along this route because it is funded heavily by the state, by the federal government, because it is one of the major corridors. The interesting thing about this, and I guess I'll go into each site when we hit the rezones. I won't waste time right now. So I'll go into some of those things when we get to the rezon. But here's a large industrial site. This is an industrial site as well. The purple comes up at the end of the runway right here. And then there's an existing site right here that has an existing A.D.A. approved material site for materials for development. In development, it's really awesome if you have material sites located next to your project. We're happy about that. We'll use it here, and we think we'll be able to develop that along the Detrital Basin as well. So in this area, in these areas, if you're not familiar, the White Hills and Dolan Springs areas are considered outlined community areas in the Mojave County General Plan. It gives a lot of flexibility for how that development goes. There's this... Our proposal is certainly not new to this area. There have been previous proposals. In fact, I presented two of them almost 20 years ago up in the White Hills area, the Mardi and Ranch, the Ranch at White Hills project, which included, I think, about 26,000 homes, as well as the Mardi and Ranch project I presented before the previous boards, and we got approval. That project was huge as well, and actually extends over to Pierce Ferry. The third project in this area, which was approved as well, was the Jim Rhodes Project, the villages at White Hills. And Mr. Barbridge has since picked up, I think, all of that property and that for that development. Yeah, substantially all of it on the White Hills. So we have a lot of the similar project land was picked up right here and represents the property that we're presenting today. So the concept is not new. The county has been expecting urban development in these areas. Those approvals were previously done, really focused more on residential developments. At the time, 20 years ago, it was envisioned to be more of a bedroom community to Vegas, who has limited private properties. 20 years later, that has changed. Mojave County now needs suitable housing. Mojave County now requires upgraded infrastructure and service provision in these areas. The residents of Dolan Springs and White Hills have consistently discussed over the years the need for better roads in that area, better sheriff protection in the area. They don't have a grocery store. There is no bank up there. There's all sorts of service things that need to be added or that people would enjoy. The Entrata development does provide many of those things, which would be a benefit to the new residents as well as the existing. So the thing that makes this different from those previous developments in terms of focus is the other ones focus on residential, and Mr. Barbridge and the Entrata team are going to focus on a strong economic development focus. So we know that we need revenue enhancers. We know we need strong and stable employment bases. We need education facilities. We need public facilities. We need good roads. We need good traffic patterns. We have to worry about our access off of... Oh, I'm getting the hook. All of those things. This plan does present and intends to have full improvements. It does include all the elements, large open space land, open space, manufacturing, industrial. The airport element is huge. It offers a tremendous economic boon potential, and right now, we have a very rare, and I would say just about once in a lifetime opportunity, to seize upon the opportunity of the Harry Reid Airport right now. It's getting close to capacity in 2030. Their closest time they can get a reliever airport is really anticipated at 2037. We already have an existing runway there, recognized by the FAA. We do intend to, if we receive all of our approvals, we do intend to look and see about diverting some of that cargo traffic. This site location is outstanding in that it meets the needs of some of these logistic commerce proposals. Three and a half hours away from Phoenix, 45 minutes to the Vegas Strip, and about five and a half hours to the ports, the LA ports, which is really key. So the project focuses on logistics, manufacturing, industrial, residential. We have a strong team here working. I guess I need to wrap it up here. I just want to focus on the public participation plan for one minute, and I'll turn it over to Al. We did an extensive, and I'm really pleased with the public outreach effort that we did. Glenda and I mailed out almost 2,000 letters initially. We held those two public hearings. They were very well attended. We have... We had a website that Mr. Barbridge set up, which had, as of a month ago, about 3,600 new hits on that. People are actually using it. It is a different time than when I processed these 20 years ago. Our outreach efforts are big. We had the two major hearings. We also had a contingent group of individuals that did not want the airport, so we set up a special meeting. And internally, they identified that on their Facebook, and we did have a few people show up to a meeting. We had some... There's a contingent of people who do not want anything out there, and that is the same as it was 20 years ago. We posted signs out on the site. We've had, you know, articles in the paper. I am really pleased. We've reached out and contacted thousands of individuals. So... Yeah, all my time. So anyways, I'm real pleased we have a majority of support. I think you have about 185 letters, comments, and support, and I'm going to turn it over to Al.
That's right. Thanks, Kathy. Thanks, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to present to you today and answer your questions. Appreciate your service. On a project this size and this magnitude, I think it's important that you understand who's behind it. My name's Al Barbridge. I'm from Detroit, Michigan. I was born and raised there. My father's a Detroit firefighter. I went to Michigan State University. I have a bachelor's in accounting and a master's in business administration. I live in Las Vegas with my wife and two daughters. I moved to Vegas in 2001, and shortly after that, I discovered this wonderful place called Mojave County. I joined up with the Mardi and family back in 2005 as their CFO, and, long story short, helped them with their development plans, but when the market crashed in 2008, 2009, they lost most of their property. And I went back to another business that I was involved in before that, which is securities trading, and I've been fortunate to be wildly successful in that business and used a lot of the profits from that business to go out and reacquire some of this land that I had always been so passionate about in this area. As Kathy mentioned, we've been in the surrounding communities for many months, doing presentations and meeting with residents. I think we've gone way above and beyond the requirements imposed on us. Just, for example, last week, I was invited up to Meadview because they were interested in our project, and I presented at the Meadview Comm. Meeting. That was 92 people there. Past Saturday, I went out to Dolan Springs, and we, as we have for many years, sponsored the Dolan Springs Community Celebration, and we had a booth there, and I was able to meet individually with locals, one-on-one, for six hours. I probably spoke with at least 100 people there and talked about any questions or concerns that people had. My team was there as well. My goal for this region, as Kathy mentioned, is to really create an economic engine here. I think we've got a unique opportunity along the I-11 corridor to institute logistics, regional distribution, warehousing, manufacturing, and really create good, high-paying local jobs, new tax revenues, expanding the tax base, brand-new infrastructure, centralized water, wastewater treatment, recycling, water recycling, paved streets, expanded law enforcement, fire protection, as well as new amenities like parks, trail systems, community centers, public pools, new options for shopping, dining, entertainment, tourism, and to meet the county's well-identified need for new and affordable housing options. We're trying to create a vibrant community, starting with a blank canvas. It's been thoughtfully planned out from the start to design a harmonious community. We engaged RVI, which is one of the premier land planning firms in the nation, and we used their Scottsdale office for that. I'd like to also talk about water conservation as well. I know that's a big topic. I see I'm running out of time here, so if you want to ask me questions about that, I'd be happy to address those issues, or if it's okay if I had another two minutes or so to start talking about that.
No, that's okay. We can ask questions and get the answers to what we want to know. Thank you very much. We have some people who have signed up to speak. So Danielle Keck, and Philip Robinson. Please give your name and your address.
Hi, Danielle Olekekek, 3808 North Stewart Mountain Road, Golden Valley. I want to start by thanking each one of you for your service and commitment to the residents of Mojave County. At the last meeting, many of us felt acknowledged and heard, so again, thank you. As stated on the Mojave County website, the commission's primary duty is to advise the Board of Supervisors in managing the orderly growth and physical development of Mojave County and to protect the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of its citizens. The commission will make changes to further the public interest, but will not alter plans or review regulations solely for any individual, group, or organization for their personal caprice, convenience, or profit. I'm personally concerned about the massive number of changes being requested at one time. A lot of people have reached out to me recently, and I've made a lot of new friends in the unincorporated rural Mojave County areas. From talking to longtime residents, reading and research, I've discovered that Mojave County has experienced working with developers who have proposed big dreams only to have them fail and turn into bigger problems. I have been trying to have an open mind about this development and understand the value it could bring to the area, but there does seem to be some conflict in values between the residents that value peaceful rural way of living and those who value industry, economic growth, progress, and so on. I grew up in Southern California and witnessed how quickly development can take over and change an entire landscape of an area. I do wonder if all these projects will be starting at the same time, or if this is just a giant step that they can get done so they don't have to worry about it in the future. After reading through the letters of support and searching the listed parcel numbers, it did seem like there were many letters that were from people who don't currently live here and some that were signed with the same signature. So I hope Mojave County would do their due diligence to make sure no one has become a victim of fraud or forgery. At this time, I do not oppose or support these rezoned requests, but see no harm in slowing down to allow for more research, impact studies, and confirmation of a sufficient water supply. Thank you.
Thank you. I need Don Martin to be standing in the way here, and you must be Philip.
Yes, ma'am.
Your name and your address, please.
Philip Robinson, 2840 South Papago Road, Golden Valley. I'm standing up before you. I'm not opposed to it, and I'm not against it. I'm concerned about our police department. Sheriff would be out there. He doesn't have a budget. That's a big concern to me. He's running all over this county. Next one is our water. Are we going to be doing... I know it's at the early stages, but are we going to be doing a water test? What I've read on their thing is that we got a 100-year water survey out there. False. That's false. I don't trust the government at all. Well, I don't. My next concern is that runway, they're only going to be able to land north and south. That means that they're going to be going right by that truck stops that's there. That's a big concern. Where are the fire department? That's only a volunteer fire department that's out there right now, that I'm aware of. Is that right? But anyway, that's my concerns.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
But thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Don Martin, and I want Stephen Olman in waiting.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Don Martin, 2644 Okanero Street, Kingman, Arizona. Also have a home up in Meadview, Arizona. As a over 50-year resident of Mojave County, I've been up into this area probably more than anybody maybe in this room. I have been at the meeting where Mr. Barbridge gave in Meadview, and very interesting, I have heard and been involved and watched lots of projects over Mojave County in the last 50 years that I've been a resident here. I noticed something about Mr. Barbridge. He's got a background that's different than these other guys. I think he saw the mistakes that they've made in the past when they wanted to do projects here. He's a private property landowner. He's well-funded. You know, I know I hear concerns about people saying, "Well, he's just going to dry up and blow away and put hydrogen plants up there." You know, nobody can say that, but I don't believe that would happen in his case. I think every case now, we're kind of caught up in this hysteria about all these projects being promoted here in Mojave County, hydrogen, the solar panels. I think that, in order to be fair, we've got to give everybody an equal chance and opportunity and look at each one of these opportunities, these proposals, not in a blanket thing, but look at them individually. Look at them on the merits, and if there's problems, look at those, too. I think it should go on. I think we should use due diligence. We need to, and make sure that what Mr. Barbridge is proposing is, in fact, what's going to happen, because all we want is what's best for Mojave County and its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are you Leroy?
I'm Stephen Olman.
Oh, Stephen, okay. Stephen Olman. You're next, and then Leroy.
Hello, I'm Stephen Olman. I have a 40-acre parcel, 32915017. I have a 40-acre parcel, 32915017. I'm a combat veteran from the early years of the Iraq and Afghanistan wars, and I've spent a long healing journey trying to find a place to call home and be peaceful. I've moved about every two years of my whole life. And I finally moved out to White Hills, and I found my home, and I found my stars, and I found my peace. And now, everybody I've talked to about this that has been there, the only people that I see that are for this are usually people who are excited that their property value's going to go up. People have been out there building their own homes and building this whole community up on their own. When they talk about employment opportunities, employment for who? These people will be able to maybe do the entry-level jobs at these places. That's why they want to build a housing, because they can bring in outsiders and people who didn't really work for living out there. The whole country is like being consumed by consumerism and industry and all this, like, you have an airport 30 minutes north, you have an airport 30 minutes south. Why do you need one right there? Like, why ruin what's left of this nature and beauty, and the stars will go away? Because you'll have all the lights out here. You'll have, it's, the people that have been there for years and years and years will get priced out of their homes, because what's going to happen is that the taxes and everything's going to rise, and the prices for everything is going to rise. And there's people that built their own homes with their own hands, and sooner or later down the road, they're not going to be able to afford that anymore. So like, I served my country, and what I'm asking you to do is serve us, who actually live here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. Leroy Elderman, I believe it says? That's okay. Nobody seems to want to write their name.
So, my name is Leroy Edelman. I live, oh, before I start, I have some pamphlets I didn't print out enough for all of you. I can keep one to show, I guess the thing is gone. I got five of them. I'll need this one.
Ooh, that's nice.
Okay, so, my name is Leroy Edelman. I live at 11497 West Bonanza in White Hills. This is a house that I built 18 years ago that I played a big part in building with my own two hands. It is an early picture before the rest of the property was developed. Every post hole, every corral, every fence was stretched by me and my wife. We have lived out there to be able to live in an AR-zoned area for raising small farms, which is what Arizona zoned that area for to begin with. And the reason why I bought there is because I knew that the people that lived around me and moved in around me would have the same values of living like that. I did not move out there for my zoning to change and all of a sudden have condensed housing around me. My concern is, on the next page, you can see an aerial photo of where his airport actually is and where my house is. It's less than a mile where those, less than a mile from me where those planes are going to be flying overhead. Right here is the windmills that are a mile behind me. My worrying concern is the health, of the health and economic impact this is going to have on me. Nobody's going to buy my house with an airport and windmills right behind me. This is going to destroy everything that I've saved for to move out to an area like this instead of the city. It's going to destroy everything I've worked for my entire life, and I'm not sure I'm going to be able to sell my house for the value. A house like that would take me, with today's costs, about probably almost half a million dollars to build, and if I can't sell it for that, I'm never going to be able to move anywhere else to get my quality of life back, of what is going to be destroyed here. Not to mention about the health effects. The ultrafine particles left by planes is four to five times higher. My wife has asthma. The quality of life, the impact that it's going to have on my livestock, my horses, my goats, my pigs, I don't know. I hope that you guys can care for, we have enough cities. We've got Kingman 50 miles away, there's Vegas 50 miles away. We don't need another one. Where are people like us supposed to go for our quality of life that don't want the shopping and the airports? I'm done. So anyways, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mike Bradley, and behind him, I want Brett.
Hi, my name is Mike Bradley. I represent Fort Bradley Farms at 2313 Sweet Bush Road off Stockton Hill in Mojave County, Arizona. I'm speaking in favor of the rezone for this project. Seems to me like a win-win for the county, going to bring in new jobs. I've lived down the road from the big farm that they started years ago. If you ask me, they do everything right, their water quality, they, you know, they got people out there fixing leaks. Everything that they have built so far is beautiful, in my opinion. I think that they would be a good partner for our county, and it would be a total win-win. So I would suggest that you approve the rezone. Thank you.
Thank you. And you are Brett? Give us your name and your address.
I'm Brett Forrester, live in Golden Valley, 2047 Estrella Road. Before my time starts, but it has started. 1986, the roughly 20 square miles of land in La Paz County was purchased in the city of Phoenix, serves as a backup for its own municipal water supply. City estimated it could use the land and tap into the groundwater, pumping the camp, into delivered water up to 150,000 homes, but Phoenix never tapped that resource and instead lead, leased and landed that land to Arizona farmers who grew less water-intensive crop. City assessed aquifer in 2011 and found that the desert monsoon rains recharge the aquifer each year to allow for current homeowners in La Paz County to live there indefinitely, but that as a result of agricultural use, the water table had dropped, and eventually it would run out of, as for the homeowners would lose access to the vital water. "I am disappointed," quote-unquote, "in the lack of action," Ferris said. "People who will continue to come here and sink deep wells into this unregulated area and do what they want with the groundwater because they can or until the groundwater runs out, and then they will leave." Kathy Ferris is the former head of the state's Water Department and helped craft the state's 1980 Groundwater Management Act that protected aquifers in urban areas such as Phoenix, but not in rural areas such as La Paz County or Mojave County, a compromise between those who saw a need regulated water access the entire state and those who don't want any of the regulations. Now, with the increased investment into pumping out the Arizona's rural water, Ferris said lawmakers need to update the state's law to protect the rural aquifers. If Las Vegas is having expansion problems, they can search in their own backyards, not in Arizona's. We live here, work here, and ultimately will die here. It is how we live, it is how we die that will tell us the story of how we lived. Remember, there are plenty of examples of what not to do here in this situation. Let us be the exception to this trend of the destruction and not the progress. The trend is the exact opposite of what is happening here in Mojave County.
Thank you, sir.
And GVID needs to be private.
Thank you. We don't want any clapping. Thank you very much. Tim Sanders and Tyler Engel. Tim Sanders, and standing in the wings is Tyler Engel. Next up will be, after these two, will be Joanne Courier.
Good morning. My name is Tim Sanders. I live at 17288 Lost Mine Drive in Dolan Springs, Arizona. All the research that I've been able to do, I think this project is well-funded. I think it's ready, it's needed in this county. I think the county needs progress. We need to have people, we need to have a tax base that'll kind of raise all boats. And I'm quite for this project, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. No clapping.
Uh, thank you.
Name and address, please, sir.
Tyler Engel, 1429 South Copperwind Lane, Kingman, Arizona. I'd like to speak for the amendment and the related rezones for the project. Think it'd be great for the area, speaking from the contractor's perspective, of which I own a contracting company. The area is excited for the potential additional work that could last for a long time and help employ a lot of people in that area. Also, as far as the housing issue, the county actually this year funded an affordable housing study, and I was on the panel. We had three meetings throughout the county, and a consultant did a study analyzing the land and where would make the most sense in the county to expand and to help solve the housing issues that we're having. And this area was one that was identified that could be used for affordable housing and to help house people and bring more people in. We're definitely suffering in the Kingman area, especially with places to live. Just spoke with someone yesterday, took a new job in Kingman, couldn't find, couldn't find anywhere to live. So even though this would be about 40 minutes away, people commute and travel a lot further than that around the country to jobs and things, so I don't think it would be beyond the realm of possibility that people could live there and work in Kingman, or live in Kingman and work out at Entrada. So, thank you.
And hopefully the cost of gas will go down. Joanne Courier and Katherine Manny, standing. Your name and address, please, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Joanne Courier, 2112 North Fortuna Drive, White Hills. I am here to be, address the fact that we have moved from the city and we are retired, and we have done, built our forever home in White Hills. The developers, supporters, and decision-makers are not those living directly in the area affected. Those living in the area affected are not in support of the development. This proposed very large development brings cargo planes, distribution centers, commercial areas that will overpower our quality of life, increased semi-truck traffic, increased traffic, increased smog, noise, and light pollution, increased traffic accidents, increased water usage, increased safety hazard, increased mental and physical health complications for local residents, as well as environmental damage and danger. Decreased availability and ease of access to White Hills Road for the locals living off the road whose sole access to their homes is off this road. I hope that all you will do your due diligence into checking into these issues for this very large development that will affect our quality of life. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Katherine Manny, Manny, see. No Katherine? How about Logan Marsh and Naomi Perez?
Good morning, Commissioners, Chair. Thank you. I am going to be talking in support of this-
Name and address, please.
Oh, sorry. Logan Marsh, 917 South Emory Park Road. I'm going to be talking in support of this project for many reasons. As a local business owner and investor in Mojave County, the growth potential here is huge. The tax base coming from this project is going to be amazing for this county. I've spent a lot of time talking to the community. I'm also running for office, so I'm out engaging with community members in Meadview, White Hills, Dolan Springs, and this is a pretty hot topic that comes up a lot in support and some in not support. The biggest concern I've heard about the airport. With that said, a lot of the questions that these community members have given me, I've directly asked Allen and got a really reasonable answer, and answers that were, in my opinion, satisfactory and has won my support on the project. I think the growth from this project's going to be amazing. Every community's going to have people who are going to agree and disagree, but I look forward to investing in his investment in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Naomi? And then I'd like Roberto Martinez to be standing in the wings.
Hola, hi, how are you? I'm here in very, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, my name is Naomi Perez, and my address is 21500 North Miramar, White Hills, Arizona. I'm here to support, I'm very excited for everything that's coming. We need, I mean, I drive to Vegas, I drive 50 miles, like I say, I live in White Hills, and I love it. But I mean, when I, we need food, we need to see the doctors. We don't have fires, we don't have nothing. I mean, we need to drive to Vegas, or we need to come to Kingman. I mean, so I'm very excited and I'm in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Roberto?
Yes, Roberto Martinez. I live in Vegas, but I'm planning to build a home, and usually in the weekends I come to enjoy the, my property is in White Hills, 31738, 273, and I'm planning to build a house. I am in favor of this project because without Entrada or when Entrada project, the growth is coming. I noticed that. And I prefer a master development growth, because like me, a lot of people want to come and have tranquility, and I'm not the only one. Thousands are going to come, and those people, a lot of people, they don't follow the kind of rules. They move without stepping tanks, without following, you know, the rules, and it's worse than having this project, because this project has more benefits than downfall. For example, I had an incident that I had to call 911, and I noticed that there is only two deputies covering the whole area in White Hills, Dolan Springs, Meadview, and Chloride, and it took more than an hour to be there. And I know it's no budget for it, because the situation, but this project is going to bring, have more police officers or a surveillance station, fire departments, and I'm going to be retiring, and, you know, when my health, I am a diabetic, if I call 911, it's going to take an ambulance from Kingman to get to my property, I don't know, more than two hours or an hour. And what Mr. Allen is proposing is a master plan community where it's going to, we're going to have all those benefits. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jamie Sanchez and Tom Gracekar. Name and address, please, sir.
Hi, Ms. Sanchez, 1812 Golden Sky Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada. Right now, we're living in Las Vegas, but we, I have my kids, and we have a property in Dolan Springs, and one of the things that we want is for them to grow in a peaceful place, and I know that we're not going to live forever, but our generation is. So if this prop, if all this opportunity is going to be better for our, for our country or for our Dolan and Springs and White Hills, I'm for it, and it's going to be the best opportunity ever happening to Dolan and Springs. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Tom Trace, you have to say that name for me.
It's Treeacre.
Oh, Treeacre. I didn't even look that way.
Yeah, yeah.
Name and address, please.
My name is Tom Treeacre, and my address is 19887 North US Highway 93, White Hills. I want to thank all of you for having this hearing. It's really pretty interesting. I've been in this business for 50 years. I started out right out of college in '73. I was involved in the development of all of Pinnacle Peak. I did, I did numerous subdivisions in Pinnacle Peak. I did Pinnacle Peak Village. It became one of the finest areas in all of Arizona. I did the development of Scottsdale Airport. I did the extension of the runway. I put in, my office was on the runway. I put in, my office was on the runway, right at midfield. I lived and breathed the runway every day. It's the number two generator in the whole state of Arizona and it's, it's, I'm really, really proud of it. I know everybody's concerns. I understand that and I can appreciate that. You know, we all want to be the last ones to come in and stay and nobody else come behind us. And, you know, I wish we could make that happen, but most areas have to either grow or they die. And the quality of the growth is the hard part, you know, to getting the good growth. And you can drive around and look, and when we first, my wife and I first came to Scottsdale in '73, you know, to be involved in the development of Pinnacle Peak Village, it was, it was geodesic domes, mobile homes, just like White Hills was. And all the areas kind of start out like that. But as they grow and develop, they get better developments coming in, they get better projects coming in. All that gets pushed aside and the area gets better and better and better. And I really feel that White Hills has the opportunity to be something really nice. Doesn't have to be the biggest and most number of people, but it just has to be a nice, nice project. I was involved in a lot of the airport stuff in Arizona. I've been a pilot for a long time. I was a commissioner in Scottsdale for a lot of years. I approved the expansion of Scottsdale Airport. I approved all the stuff that's on the airport. The airport is something really good and it's the only place you can do an airport that's over 5,000 feet long.
Thank you, sir. I have a question for you. Are you invested in this property at all? Okay, thank you.
I own property by Rosy's, but no, not this.
Okay, thank you. Having no one else who wants to speak on this, I am going to close the public hearing and ask the Commissioners if they have any questions. I have a couple.
I have one.
Um, I'd like to know what, and forgive me if you have it on the prospectus and I missed it, but do you have a police department?
Uh, no, I'll answer that. This is Kathy Tackett Hicks. So the Sheriff's Department does cover, the one gentleman indicated there's just two sheriffs that cover that area. So with the broadened tax base, the county will be able to provide additional safety, public safety support out there. And just as a follow-up, we did also meet with the fire chief out there. And in our plan, we do have a proposed second firehouse location for them near the airport, right off of White Hills Road to provide increased service from that department.
Is there any talk between you and the police department or the Sheriff's Department about eventually having a place for them?
Yeah, so down in the Dolan Springs area on the master plan, we do show a second location that we would assume would be used for public services, including a sheriff's substation right off 93.
The other thing that I heard was light pollution. I think everyone is aware that Havasu has no lights. We have no streetlights and that is the reason, so we can look at the stars. So what have you planned as far as lights, lighted streets are concerned?
Right, so the county has a dark sky ordinance, the outdoor lighting regulation that they have. It does require shielded lights, lights pointing down. It doesn't have, it doesn't authorize overshadow of your lights onto your neighbor's property. Having said that, it's still a difficult thing. In addition to urban developments, if you're within a mile of school, the county also requires streetlights and stuff. So if the goal out there is to have less lighting for urban development areas, we're going to have to work with the county because there are some requirements that are inherent to that as part of processing the subdivision. But we would follow the dark sky ordinance and that is really beneficial that that requirement's in place.
Okay, that's all that I have. Commissioner Portillo?
My big question is, is, you know, the potential water use on this project. I'm assuming you'll be tapping the trital aquifer. And I know that, or I assume, so if somebody correct me if I'm wrong, that previous, previous projects that were proposed for the area, they have had 100-year adequate water supply? And I assume that's still going to be a requirement for your proposed development? Are you going to be doing any new studies in the aquifer? What's going to be going on with the, you know, management of water use and that type of thing?
So I'm going to start that now and can fill in because we've done a lot of work on the water. So the pre, three previous subdivisions out there did in fact, or the master plan community areas did in fact secure as part of their development, the 100-year water analysis of adequate water supply. There is the physical availability of water out there. The Detrital Basin is huge. It's largely untapped and Mr. Barbridge can get into those reasons why, but there is sufficient, the physical availability of water there. We do have to complete our own 100-year water adequacy process through ADWR. The county will absolutely require that we have 100-year water supply before we proceed with any of these residential type developments. So that is a requirement that's already at the city. And I'll just also let you know, when you process the subdivisions, there was a comment made before, the master plan communities come in, then they fail and they leave a big mess. Actually, don't leave a big mess, they just fade away. In this case, these developments did in fact confirm up the physical availability of water. So there was a lot of good data coming from them. When you go through the ADW water process, the determination of the physical availability of water is just one of the steps. And those projects had that, secured that, failed to use them. They were either rescinded or in the case of the Martyn Ranch project, they were returned back to ADWR because they knew they weren't going to be used. But there are two other steps that still have to occur. So the first one that we're trying to do, which has been done, which is a huge benefit to the Entrada project because there's much less risk associated with it, has been done. There is water there. The second step is to create a legal entity to be able to deliver that water, authorized to distribute that water. And then the third step is building the infrastructure necessary to actually deliver that to customers and stuff, which is, all of those levels are governed by ADW, or ADWR. ADQ Department is, Mr. Portillo is very familiar with that, ADQ. The county reviews that process. The Arizona Corporation Commission reviews the legal entity issues. So there are many layers of government watching that process. And Al, did you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, the water use is obviously a hugely important question on something like this. So thanks for the question. And what I have up here on the overhead is this is a map of the Detrital Water Basin. And it might be a little bit hard to see, but the blue outline here, I'm going to try and talk while I'm pointing. This is the basin boundaries here. It's a very large basin, but what you'll notice, if you, if you study it carefully, which of course I have, the vast majority of the property in the basin is federal and state land. So everything north of us here, we called it Entrada because Entrada means entrance in Italian. It's literally the entrance to Arizona coming from Nevada. You drive 25 miles before you come to the first private parcel, which is, which is part of the Entrada project. But it's a, it's a huge basin and there's, the land uses are as follows. There's federal land, state land, and then you have a lot of mountainous land, which is not suitable for, for development. And then you have a lot of these legacy subdivisions of one acre and five acre lots that were platted in the 1960s and 1970s primarily, that are owned by thousands of different individuals and aren't served by any infrastructure. So there's not really any, any capacity for any kind of intensive development there. And then you have, most of what's left is the Entrada project. So there's not going to be an Entrada 2 and an Entrada 3 and this is it, in this basin. And of course, we've done the 100-year study that's been done by Clear Creek Associates, one of the top hydrology firms in the state. It's in ADWR's hands right now and they are vetting that 100-year water supply. And we know we have it, but I want to talk about conservation as well because we intend to go above and beyond in terms of water conservation. I'll use the example of Las Vegas because that's where I live and I see what's happening there. Las Vegas is sometimes criticized as being, you know, at fault for, you know, Lake Mead's water levels going down. That's really not deserved. The, the Water District there really has done a fantastic job of encouraging and mandating conservation. The, or the whole state of Nevada itself only gets 2% of the Colorado River water allocation. And Las Vegas, it's, it's not well-known, but uses less water today than they did in the year 2000, 23 years ago with an additional 750,000 residents. And the reason for that is that most of the water that's used inside is recycled, treated and recycled and pumped back out to Lake Mead. So when I take a shower in the morning, that's zero net water use because that goes down the drain and back into the system. It's largely a closed-loop system. And what does use water in Las Vegas primarily is grass, right? So, so the one thing that they're doing is now mandating that all non-functional turf be removed from common areas throughout the city. So outside of my subdivision right now, they are literally tearing out the grass and they're replacing it with desert landscape, rocks and bushes and flowers and trees. And they're beautiful. They look fantastic. They add a lot of color and character to the community. They're just not grass and they use a tiny fraction of the water. And we intend to emulate that at Entrada, you know, a closed-loop centralized water, wastewater treatment system, so that wastewater can be used for the desert landscaping. And we won't put in turf from the start, that's not functional. We will have over time, you know, soccer fields or baseball fields, things like that. That is functional turf that people, people use. But the non-functional turf that's just decorative, we don't intend to have any of that from, from day one.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Yes, Commissioner, or Chair, I have a question.
Okay. Commissioner Bradshaw?
So first, I want to say how much I appreciate the efforts that's been put into this project. I'm a major proponent of master plant communities. I think they're a value forward for a, a way to level commitment from developers that other people can have confidence in to come and buy and invest and bring homes to. So to that level, I am, I am in favor of this. I am, I do have some discussions though. I heard one discussion about EMS and fire station locations. Seems, seems like one location is a little bit underutilized for this, this size of a development. No discussion really about schools and churches and maybe we're getting to that level. We'll talk about that maybe in some zoning applications. But schools and churches and public, public open spaces and public spaces, parts, trails, et cetera. And to that end, I'm, I'm anxious that a development agreement, and I'm sure that the developers and owners are working to this end. It's not something that's been put forward at this level, which I understand, but hopefully that is something that is in the mix, that a development agreement can be forwarded through the county process and ultimately gives, again, I think that sense of commitment and level of security to anyone who's interested in the area.
Was, was there a question in that?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think the question was, is there a development agreement coming? I apologize if it didn't come across as a question.
So you and I did speak about this briefly a little bit. There is not a developer's agreement right now, but certainly in the future in connection with potential airport uses, the rezone that we offered that's coming to you. There is some discussion on municipal uses in that, there might be that. Currently, our approach right now with the project with all the rezone and the major general plan amendment is to proceed exactly into the county's regulations. So we're not asking for anything unique or special at this time, but if we come to a point where we can help leverage and help the county and we need things which we can jointly benefit from, absolutely, we would look at the option of a developer's agreement. Al, I don't know if you had any other thoughts?
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hubbard?
Yeah, as far as the project goes, it sounds good. I'm kind of worried about the little guy. Are you going to import the work, the workers? The local contractors are probably sharpening their teeth on this and they want to go to work. Are you planning on bringing somebody from Detroit or Vegas or are you going to use the local people?
No, it's, it's our intention to hire as locally as possible. In fact, if you look in your packets there, you've got a list of our consultants and contractors, engineers. It would be more convenient for me, honestly, to hire an engineering firm and land planners and things like that out of Las Vegas so I could go easily drive to their office and sit down with them. But we've deliberately created a slate and a team from Arizona. This is an Arizona project and it deserves Arizona jobs for the Arizona people. And we will always think that way and, you know, I will, if I can hire the graders out there, that's what we're doing and we, you know, intend to do that and rely on, you know, Kingman. There, there may be times when we, you know, can't source, source a certain thing locally. Then we'll consider other options, but we're always going to consider local.
It's a big project. I've seen him before and I'm glad you're young.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a big project and I'd like to address that a little bit.
I'd like to say, ask you one thing though.
I'm not that young, I just turned 50, so.
Boy, you look like a kid. All right, are you planning on splitting this later when you get going on it and selling it off certain sections to, so you're not completely in charge of it? Or you got family or who's going to take care of this thing down the road?
Yeah, obviously, I'm, I'm growing my team as we speak and bringing on additional folks as...
You did say you had some kids.
Yeah, I got, I got two daughters, they're seven and nine. I got started late with the family, but...
I'm just kind of curious how long your family or your corporation or whoever is going to run it?
No, I'm not so arrogant to think that I can tackle this all by myself and that I don't need to bring in additional resources and development expertise with, with, with something of this, of this scale.
Glad, I'm still glad you're young.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Morse?
Good morning. I've gone through the plan pretty good and, and I want to applaud you for the efforts that you've put forth. It is a difficult project that you're, you're proposing in that it's bifurcated. Two major bifurcations, but each of the areas have their own problems, which is going to lead to infrastructure problems down the road and whatnot. Not insurmountable, but, but certainly complicates the overall project. You know, they'll, they'll be, and this is a general plan amendment that we're talking about, major amendment. So we've heard testimony from individuals within the audience and what we've received in the way of correspondence that is very helpful in formulating a decision to approve or deny this project. I think you've done a good job. You got a lot of work for you in place, you know, in front of you. I don't have any questions, it's just comments that I wanted to present.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. I'm going to now ask for a motion.
Am I allowed to motion 14 through 24 at once? I make a motion to approve item 14 per staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Hassett, seconded by everybody. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. So now we will move on to item 15. Alex Bolin?
Item 15 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessors' parcel numbers 31619001 through 022, 31707001 and 002, a portion of 32601011, 015 and 017 through 022, and a portion of 32613005 from an AR 36A. portion of 326-13005 from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone and an AR 10A agricultural residential...
Excuse me one minute. All of you who are leaving, please try to be quiet. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size zone to an R2 medium-density residential zone to allow for residential uses in the Dolan Springs vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you very much, Alex. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask, I know the applicant is present, do you wish to say more?
Please no.
I'm just going to be real quick on all these. So I work with staff on these rezones. The reason that we're coming in with rezones is to really firm up the plan because if I only requested and received a major general plan amendment, none of this would be required of the developer. There's too much wiggle space. So we're coming in here to rezone. This particular one, I grouped them into settings for the southern portion and northern portion. This particular one is in the southern portion, Dolan. The R2 zoning designation is necessary because it offers a full complement of housing stock. It is supported by the general plan amendment that we just had. It is intended to provide additional housing stock for the project as well as for existing residents. And on our map, those are the areas that are in yellow. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Are you people who are leaving, please go outside to talk and shut the door.
Go away.
I guess I wanted to add one more thing as well. This is really important because it fits in with our overall philosophy, but the R2 zoning does require trails and pathway systems, which we intend to do. So although we're asking for a big ask on the zoning, it does obligate the developer to provide these things. It also requires a 15% set aside for open space when you do cluster type developments and stuff. So there's a burden on the developer as well. We're in agreement with staff recommendations and I would ask you to please approve this.
Let me ask you a question. When you say open spaces, are you talking about parks?
Yeah, we're talking about common space elements that everyone within the development would be able to use.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing because we have no one that wants to speak on this and ask if the commissioners have any questions at this time. Hearing none, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Motion to approve with staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. My southern accent came out, I'm sorry. Item number 16, Alex Boland.
Item 16 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessors' parcel numbers 317-01010 and 011, 317-09103C, 113D and 137C, 326-03015A and 138B, a portion of 326-13005 and 006 from an AR 10A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size zone, AR 5A agricultural residential 5-acre minimum lot size zone, AR agricultural residential zone, and an A general zone to a C2H highway commercial zone to allow for commercial uses in the Dolan Springs vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. We have no one who has requested to speak, but I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for the applicant.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks, acting as the owner's agent again. So this addresses, this particular application addresses a commercial sites located along the I-11, Highway 93. C2H zoning is standard along these areas. You've seen it 100 times before. I've processed probably 100. So this is designed to serve the traveling public. It can have C2 and C1 uses as well. It's going to help the areas have the commercial services and supply things that they need. I'm in agreement with the staff recommendations. I ask for you to approve it and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hassett, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 17, Alex Boland.
Item 17 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of a portion of assessors' parcel numbers 326-01011 and 326-03014 from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone and an A general zone to an SDC, special development commercial zone, to allow for a regional commercial center use in the Dolan Springs vicinity. The SDC zone will allow for both general commercial and highway commercial uses. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing and I know the applicant wishes to speak.
Just real quick on each one. So this is a request for a special district in the commercial portion that allows flexibility and mixed-use developments to occur. This particular site is intended to be the shopping complex area, major commercial area for services for the Dolan Springs or southern portion here. I couldn't ask for, this commercial special district also allows for C2H uses because this site actually doesn't touch the I-11 corridor. So that's a special consideration. I just wanted you to know what this is for. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions from the commissioners? I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move to approve with staff recommendation. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Portillo, seconded by Commissioner Morse. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Item number 18, Alex Boland.
Item 18 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of a portion of assessors' parcel numbers 317-36032, 057, 058, a portion of 059, a portion of 092, 093, 317-42005 through 012, 021 through 028, 037 through 044, 053 through 060, 069 through 076, 085 through 092, 101 through 108, 117 through 124, portions of 317-42127, 128, and 113, 317-45001, a portion of 317-55001, 317-59005, and 317-60029 from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone, AR agricultural residential zone, and A general zone to an R2 medium-density residential zone to allow for residential uses in the White Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for the applicant.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks and I'm acting as the owner's agent. This is another request in the northern portion for our residential uses. Again, it's an R2 use which allows for the full complement of residential uses, provides that diversity of housing stock and allows flexibility when you have market issues and specific needs for the surrounding areas. Since it's 20, 30, or 40-year project, we do need that flexibility. Again, it requires trails and parks, paths through there, 15% set aside for multifamily housing stuff. We're in agreement with the staff recommendations. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have any questions? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and call for a motion.
Motion to approve with staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Portillo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Item number 19, Alex Boland.
Item 19 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of a portion of assessors' parcel numbers 317-36059, 317-36092, and 093, 317-41003, portions of 317-41005, 317-56001 through 003, 005, and 006 from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone to a C2 general commercial zone to allow for commercial uses in the White Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for the applicant.
Thank you again, Honorable Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks. This is a request for a rezone for the commercial parcels proposed along the White Hills Road area. The first closest parcel to 93 is just going to be used for general commercial. There's a larger parcel south of the airport area which is intended to be our anchor site for the large shopping complex center. Further on up, we have another site identified for commercial which also includes some high-density housing units as well and some of the other public facility sites, the treatment site and stuff like that. So C2 allows all of those things to happen. And then further to the east is another commercial site which allows for high density and has some other potential uses in terms of tourists. If you have any questions, the goal is to provide a complete complement of services along the White Hills Road. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions from the commissioners? Thank you very much. I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move to approve with staff recommendations.
Second the motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Portillo, seconded by Commissioner Alexander. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Item number 20, Alex Boland.
Item 20 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of a portion of assessors' parcel numbers 317-36092, 317-42001 through 004, 013 through 020, 029 through 036, 045 through 052, 061 through 068, 077 through 084, 093 through 100, 109 through 112, a portion of 113 through 116, 125 through 127, 317-56001, a portion of 317-56003, 004, 006, 317-61012, 014, 017 through 021, 025 and 026 from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone and an AR 10A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size zone to an AD airport development zone to develop a full-service airport including manufacturing and industrial support in the White Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for the applicant.
Thank you again, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks. This is the one area of the parcel that we, or the project, that we have had some opposition. I did hold an extra special meeting to try to discuss with people, although only a handful of people showed up to that. There are two opposition letters of the two ladies that live in this area that have opposed it, and the one gentleman was up here earlier. When I look at this site for airport development, it's really good for this type of development. It also has limited structures and development around it. There's no other site in Arizona to allow for this. This particular rezone request is the only zone designation in the county that allows for this type of work, which will include manufacturing, industrial, the air park, business park uses in here. I already told you earlier, we do intend to go after, position this as a potential reliever airport for the problems that are currently existing on the Harry Reid Airport. We have a real opportunity and we would like the opportunity to go after that. Further on in this, I did make some concessions, or I'm sorry, me and Mr. Barbridge made some concessions with our zoning to try to accommodate some of the concerns of the airport, but I can tell you, you know, if you look at other small airports, there's literally housing up to the airports. Look at the Vegas Airport. The fact that the one gentleman is located almost a mile away, to me, was awesome. So we want to keep working with them. We will, but I would ask you, please approve this. It's critical to the Entrada plan and I think we can really make something good out of this area. If you have any questions, I am available and certainly Mr. Barbridge is to answer any specific questions.
I have a question, just out of curiosity. I noticed that there were some windmills along one side of the airport.
So those are located, they're not adjacent to, but they are to the north, and that's that big federal wind project on BLM properties. So that's a couple miles. The gentleman said that it was a mile away from him, but it's really about, those windmills are over two miles away from his home.
I did discover, I just got back from Oklahoma, and I did discover that those things are huge.
Yeah.
So it would make them look closer than they actually are. What are you using for electricity? Is this beneficial to you in this project?
So we're working with Unisource to extend power for the project. There are no other ideas, I think, because this is 20, 30, 40, 50-year project. There may be other options available, but right now, we are working with Unisource.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
When did the FAA recognize the field? When was it built?
It was approved, I believe, in, I want to say 2017 or so, and then we actually constructed it and filed our notice of approval with, or notice of construction with the FAA in, I think it's 2020.
So the field is all part of the Entrada project? It wasn't existing when you purchased the land?
It was already approved when I bought the land, but it was not in place. So, yeah, and we put it in as a private strip initially, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Hubbard.
So are you going to make this a solar field? Is that what you're planning on doing with it? Because the windmills are not good. And you say you needed power, so you're going to go with Unisource, so you're going to put in a solar field there?
We don't have any requests in for solar development. We do intend to incorporate rooftop solar, but right now, no, we have no request in for a utility-scale solar.
No, you're not putting in a regular solar field? And Unisource has to pick it up? The solar fields, Unisource has to pick it up. If you build it and offer it, they have to take it.
Correct.
So is that what you're planning on?
When we say field, we're talking about a runway.
Oh, okay. But he says it'd need electricity for it.
I would assume so.
Yeah, we'll need power for the whole development.
You're going to bring it in? You're going to pole it in, right?
Unisource.
Correct.
Okay, so you're not going to do a solar field then?
I'm Unisource, correct.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Any other questions? I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Motion to approve for staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Morse. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Item number 21, Alex Boland.
Item 21 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessors' parcel numbers 337-10147, 342-01002, 004, and 317-36001 from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone to an R2 medium-density residential zone to allow for residential uses in the White Hills vicinity. uses in the White Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and once again, ask for the applicant.
Hello. I know. I need the exercise. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks. I'm acting as the owner's agent. And again, just a brief deal on this. This is an R2 zoning for, if you recall, the plan for the four sections that are to the northeast, northeast. These will be planned for later development. They still require full improvements. There are some mountainous areas there, so it'll be nice to be able to look at those for different types of housing options and stuff. But this is a routine request for the R2 zoning designation. I'm in agreement with staff recommendations. I can answer any questions. I hope you'll approve it.
Thank you. Any questions? I'll close the public hearing and ask for the motion.
Motion to approve for staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Portillo. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, so moved. Item number 22, Alex Boland.
Item 22 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessors parcel number 31736055, from an AR36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone, to a CRE, commercial recreation zone, and an RE, residential recreation zone, to allow for resort and residential uses in the White Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to speak?
Real quick again, and this was the map real fast, just to show you the areas that we were talking about.
I need to open the public hearing. Thank you. I just needed to say that.
Okay. And I'm here. Kathy Tackett Hicks, acting as the owner's agent. I just wanted to show you this map. So on that last approval for the R2, it pertained to these four sites. This request here is for a CRE, commercial recreation site. It is in the mountainous areas. If you come up White Hills, so we're looking at a potential resort, outdoor uses up on the north portion, and then on the south, we want an RE use, which is a specific zoning designation the county has to accommodate and allow flexibility in mountainous areas. So it's perfect for these sites. I ask for your approval. It's, the sites are very mountainous, so they require flexibility. This zone is precisely what we need. I'm in agreement with staff recommendations. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if the commissioners have any questions. Hearing none, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Motion to approve for staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Portillo. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, so moved. Item number 23, Alex Boland.
Item 23 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of a portion of assessors parcel numbers 31755001, 31759014 through 017, and a portion of 31741005, from an AR36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone, to an SDM, special development manufacturing zone, to allow for a mix of industrial, manufacturing, and commercial uses, and sand and gravel extraction operations in the White Hills vicinity. The SDM zone will allow for MX, heavy manufacturing uses. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for the applicant.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks. So this is our, another special development, again, for manufacturing uses. It's going to be, this is a big deal for the development as well, because it offers sites for industrial parks, locations. It offers sites for material extraction, which we need for construction. The locations are highly beneficial for us. So this is the first site right here that we said we're going to go after, manufacturing, industrial, logistical, support, commerce in that location. We have the same support uses here at the end of the airport. And then down here, we have an existing A.SPEC site. We do anticipate, in the request for the special development, I did ask for MX uses as well in this, and that allows us to extract materials, which we may do here on the detrital, the detrital wash area that butts up to this. We've spoken a lot about the project. I'm happy to answer questions, but I am trying to be brief in respect of your time.
Thank you. Commissioner Hubbard?
So actually, what you're setting up is a batch plant, right?
Yeah, potentially. Yeah, we have an existing one.
Yeah, so it's a batch plant, so we're back to the water situation.
I don't know if that puts us back to the water situation, but we do expect to get materials out of that detrital wash and the one.
If you're going to have, if you're going to extract, make a batch plant, you're going to have to have washed sand, this, that, and the other, to make the concrete, so you can have trucks coming out of there.
Yeah.
So it is a water situation.
The, okay, I didn't, I didn't mean to misinterpret that. I thought you were saying this was going to, in my mind, a major draw on the water. It will be a draw.
That's all been considered, right?
Yeah, in our application to ADWR, we do have to account for industrial, commercial uses. They have a specific, so many acre per acre, and that's what we use for this. So it does assume and incorporate those types of uses.
Yeah, because you're going to have a dust problem. And your friends and neighbors are going to complain about that.
Well, the friends and neighbors on the west side is going to be us.
Well, okay.
But, but it's a really good point. And the county does respond. ADW, ADQ does respond to air quality issues. Complaints are served there. The county follows up on those. And clearly, any plant, I mean, they don't want the violations.
So that's all covered in your permits. Is that and the other, right?
It is, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Then I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
To approve with.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Hubbard. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? So moved. Item number 24, Alex Boland. Alex, you are, you're earning your, your pay today.
Item 24 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessors parcel number 31759018, from an AR36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone, to an AR agricultural residential zone, and an R2 medium-density residential zone, to allow for residential uses in the White Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kathy Tackett Hicks, acting as the owner's agent. This particular request came in extra because it's a direct result of some concerns that earlier Leroy, I'm sorry, I don't recall his last name, came up and said, Edelman? Okay. He had concerns about the location and everything with this and adjacent properties. So we went back and discussed and Al agreed that he could, that we would take this 160-acre parcel, which was adjacent to the development, and make 80 acres of that matching AR development 1-acre lots. So we don't have any issues bumping up to those existing lots. So next to Mr. Edelman will also be 1-acre minimum lot sizes. In this case, because we're still falling, I believe, under the urban development general plan umbrella, it would be required to have central water and sewer as well. So this was in direct response to hearing concerns. We've lightened up that zoning. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Motion to approve with staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Now we go to, actually, almost, commissioners' comments. Do you have any comments?
Yeah.
Hearing none, we will do the call to the public. We'll see you next time. Don't forget, all of you who are here, about these items. They will be on the, on the agenda for the supervisors, so you need to go to that meeting. Why, why are you?
Call to the public.
Come on up here. We very seldom ever get someone who sits through the whole thing just to talk on the podium.
I am very concerned with all of you agreeing.
Name and address, please.
Sorry. Joanne Courier, 21112 North Wartuna, White Hills. I'm very concerned with all of you sitting up there and approving all these things, when none of you will be living in this, what we have to live with. But this man with his deep pockets can come in and do to all of us. We have our forever home. We will not be able to stand this. This will be horrid for all of us, and I'm terribly disappointed in all of you.
You're not the first one.
Yeah, you don't want to interrupt. Thank you, ma'am. I'm sure that if you voice your opinions, that you, they will come and talk to you. Whether they can solve it or not, I don't know. Anyway, I don't have any further business to come before this meeting, so I am going to adjourn.